Ms. Starnes, can we have a roll call, please?
District one, Darrell Jeter.
Here.
District two, Michelle Glover.
Here.
District three, Eddie Skeen.
Here.
District four, Michael Bricky.
Here.
District five, Danny Castile.
Here.
District six, Chris Manis.
Here.
At large, Stephanie Addington.
Here.
Have you all had a chance to look over the agenda? Are there any additions or modifications that you wish to make? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. So good. All right. You all have had a... Oh, everybody vote my way of saying aye.
Aye.
As you all can tell, I'm new at this job.
You're doing fine.
Have you all had a chance to look at and approve the minutes from the last meeting? Do I hear a motion to that thing?
So good.
I'll second it.
Everybody vote my way of saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Now it's come time for citizen expression. I believe we have one person that signed up to go first, but after she has spoken, you all can just be orderly about it and come one at a time. Please state where you're from and the county. Sorry, let me just read this off. Citizen expression period is a point in the meeting when anyone who wishes to address the board may do so. If you wish to speak, please come into the podium and state your name, where you're from, and the county, and what organization and/or what organization you represent. The board may or may not respond to anything you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one has signed up to speak, we have no particular order. We ask that you take turns speaking and speak your business. Any action will be considered after we close citizens' expressions. Thank you.
Good morning, boards. I'm Bobby Couch Powers. I'm from DeBonne. I was raised in Coburn. That's why some of y'all don't know me. Code of Virginia 2.23700 states the affairs of government are not intended to be conducted in an atmosphere of secrecy, since at all times the public is to be the beneficiary of any action taken at any level of government. It also states the provisions of this chapter shall be liberally construed to promote an increased awareness by all persons of governmental activities and afford every opportunity to citizens to witness the operations of government. I start my day like everybody else in Scott County. I get up and throw kindling on my coals in the stove to get my fire started back. I feed my farm animals, and I go to my second job. These meeting times are terribly hard to make because our citizens can't miss the work or miss the pay in their check. In Mrs. Starnes' latest email, she invited me to her office to discuss Scott County matters that I hope she extends to a monthly meeting. If the county administrator can recognize that most people cannot make these meeting times and offers to make a special appointment for me to sit down with her, then surely these nefarious meeting times can be revisited. If a county claims to work for the people, but the people can't benefit from attending a monthly meeting, what does that say about the leaders of this county? Most of the people here at this meeting today have business on the agenda. They're not here for public expression. I'm usually the only one here that speaks first. There's very few. There's five, 10 people usually. I'd like to question... Also, in Mrs. Starnes' email, she claimed that the job titles are not changed just so that someone gets paid a higher salary. I'd like to question the job title of Mr. Bill Dingus. Over the course of four years, he went from a salary of upper $60,000s to somewhere in the $80,000s as a maintenance man. And I need someone from the board to explain to me how he could have went from a maintenance position to an assistant county administrator who makes over $100,000 a year. Assistant county administrator was a new position, correct? That position was created by whom and further voted on by the board? Ms. Starnes, you stated in your email that if I had any concerns with the way you were managing Scott County, you would be glad to sit down and meet with me over some things. Going forward, I will state my many concerns I have regarding your leadership role. I understand that the administrator has certain powers that doesn't need the board's approval, and I think it's wonderful that you want to put effort into finding the Commonwealth space. It was unfortunate, however, that you didn't have the foresight to question the judges and the employees who use the building every day about the feasibility of the purchase or the addition before moving forward. I find your decision to purchase and use a county vehicle for your transportation needs and its upkeep frivolous to taxpayers, as well as the 300 per night hotels for you and your board members. I'm aware that the employee of the counties are not state employees or have to follow Commonwealth pay schedule. Are you aware that according to my research so far, Wise and Russell... Hold on a second. ...choose to pay their employees twice a month? I've not had time to personally check with our other district counties as of yet. Your newest modern actions, Mrs. Starnes, notably the pay study increase, the county vehicle purchase, and the creative position of county administrator assistant displays a willingness to usher Scott County into the future without benefiting Scott County citizens. Likewise, the board's current voting stance on meeting times and pay schedule for county employees displays an unwillingness to work with the public. I've spoken with Kevin through email about the county bank accounts. This morning, I'm requesting the money trail for both the ARPA funds and care funds received, each time they were received, also whether any amount of the funds were redeposited into the account and when they were redeposited. That shouldn't be a long paper trail at all and will greatly reduce my previous four-year request estimate of $2,090. I'll be emailing you soon, letting you know my schedule so we can pick a time suitable with you to discuss the county's willingness to cut county's costs. Thank you, board.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Powers. I'd just like to say that anything that Frida does, she does at the request of the board. Her position is directed by the members of the board, such as these people that are sitting up here beside me. And, you know, we trust her to do the right thing, and she has. Ever since she's come on, the county hasn't been in the red like it used to be, and we haven't had to take out loans like we used to. She's done a great job. According to several different financial consultants that we've had, we are doing the best that we can for a county of our size. And I just, you know, I just want to say, if you got a problem, Ms. Starnes is not the problem. It's the people on this board. And if you want to have a problem with somebody, it's us. I appreciate that.
So who was in position to hire him as county supervisor assistant?
I'm sure that was...
That was voted on by the board, but who suggested that?
I'm not sure.
That was done way back before Frida ever came. That was done when the other county administrator resigned or retired, and we put him in so he could help the new county administrator when she came in along with the program. That was done way back, I forget how many years ago.
It wasn't changed on paper. He was still receiving maintenance pay three to four years ago. He's just recently received county supervisor assistant pay.
No. You're wrong.
He was made assistant county administrator in mid-2016 by the previous board.
Well, why is it listed in the budget as him as maintenance?
He is the director of public works and the assistant county administrator. He does two roles.
So he does do two roles?
He does.
And you told me that he didn't. You told me that nobody that worked for you had any other job but one job.
No, I said they don't get paid multiple salaries. He was... He received $5,000 from the county administrator's salary to be assistant county administrator. That's what he gets for being assistant county administrator. And it was taken directly from the county administrator's salary.
Hold on. So you took $5,000 from your own salary?
I didn't. It was before I was hired. But the previous board did that. That's how he got the assistant county administrator fund.
So he went from $68,000... This was five years ago. He was making... In 2018, I think he went from $68,000, and this year he's making above $100,000. In five years' time, he went over a 45% raise. Is that what you're telling me?
I don't know what his previous salary was without looking back.
Okay.
I don't have that in front of me. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And I can answer her other questions while she's here, unless she has to leave. The courthouse project, everyone at that courthouse was involved. We did a big courthouse study, feasibility study, that looked 20 years out. Every department there was involved in that, and they gave our architect their projections for their needs for 20 years. That courthouse project came in anywhere from $28 to $40 million. So the board didn't want to do that project. And since then, it's been scaled down, scaled down, scaled down to an appetite that the board can afford on our immediate need. So that's the courthouse project. They have been involved.
Well, I spoke with the Commonwealth last month, and he said that when you all came over there the last time, that you spoke with the judges, nobody asked their opinion on it, that when they have to transfer the prisoners over to the courthouse, the prisoners are having interactions with the public. And if they have a case where, God forbid, there's a rape case or something shady going on, the victim doesn't want to have to intermingle with the prisoners.
I understand that. Everything has a cost.
And he said that you all did not discuss that with him. That's personally what he told me. He said that the judges, that you all spoke with the judge and everything, that you all never got their opinions on the flow, that the flow was not going to work in the area that you was wanting it to.
That courthouse security is the duties of the sheriff's office, not the Commonwealth attorney's office.
So you approved a plan... What you're saying, you approved a plan that's got to be done by the sheriff's office?
The board approved a plan.
Right. But you approved a plan and the sheriff's office designed it?
We...
The sheriff's office did not design it. The architect that we work with designed it. They designed the plan.
But the sheriff said it was okay to use it like that. He's okay with that.
Again, it's back to the cost. And Mr. Skeen has requested to take a look at that, and we're having a meeting later this week to discuss that.
Okay.
Yeah. It's one of those tricky subjects where you have to balance costs with the needed need. You know, the county can't afford $50 million for a perfect courthouse.
I completely understand. I completely understand. But the authenticity of the courthouse isn't really a matter now because somebody's come in and cobbled it up years before now. When I went up to the Commonwealth's office, it doesn't look like a historical structure. You go upstairs, through, down, wiggle through another corridor and down steps. Nothing in that building looks historical, so I'm not sure what the cost of the historical motif, I don't know what you want to call it. And that's not really my concern. My concern is cutting spending, the frivolous spending, the county car, the hotel bills, the higher taxes. And if Bill Dingus was county assistant supervisor in 2016, why was he on the budget being paid as maintenance? It has nothing on the budget. In that budget that I have, and I can present it at next meeting or whenever we meet, it doesn't say Bill Dingus, county assistant supervisor. It says Bill Dingus, maintenance, in every one of those. This is the only year it lists him as a supervisor. So, I mean, that's not me misunderstanding, that's misrepresentation. Wouldn't you agree?
I don't know that I would necessarily agree with that because he's had these duties for a long time, whether or not he's reflected in...
Well, if he was assistant supervisor, that precedes maintenance. That should have been on his... That should have been first on his tax, you know, on his payroll, building as supervisor. It shouldn't have been building as maintenance supervisor, assistant supervisor. You know what I'm saying? It should have been supervisor.
I don't...
He's listed in the budget. He's listed in the maintenance budget. That's where his salary line item is at. He's not in the county administrator's budget. He's under the maintenance budget.
Right. We're up here having a pissing match, but he's listed right under you, Frida, right down a few names from you as county administrator assistant.
But not in the budget. That's not where he's at in our line of budget. Okay. It's what I'm saying.
Okay.
The vehicle, that is part of my employment contract. A previous board gave me that as a benefit. That is not free. I do pay taxes on that vehicle. That's on my W-2. So that's not a free benefit that everybody thinks it is. That's not something that's out of the ordinary. Check with your other counties. Check with Wise County. They have a county administrator vehicle. That vehicle was paid with a grant, part of it, and with the county money, the other part. And because I am on six committees and are here and there, that's why I have the take-home vehicle.
But that's not our fault that you're on six committees and that you need help.
It is the board's fault.
It is the board's fault.
And we have put her on six committees because she is the best person for that job.
And the financial increase in the debts that you're saying Scott County has resolved and paid you... We've increased... We've decreased our debt, correct?
We've decreased our...
By several hundred thousand.
And increased our credit rating.
Right.
Because of Frida's work.
Well, I'm under the understanding that it had more to do with Kevin holding it in the accounts. It had nothing to do with Frida.
Kevin has only been in the office for a year.
It was in my understanding that Kevin was holding it in these accounts, but I want to see the money and where it's been spent.
Credit rating is more than just how much money you have in your account.
I understand.
It's your cash flow and your assets and your liabilities.
Yes, I understand that.
Okay. Just making sure.
And as far as being paid twice, we have 950 employees. They're paid once a month. For us to process payroll for that many people, we would have to have another person. So...
Do you have an assistant?
He can't do payroll!
Why? He can do everything else.
That's what you're Chris.
That's an accountant's job, not a maintenance supervisor, not a county administrator's job. I do understand where you're coming from on that. Some people have bills, but I myself have been paid monthly for most of my career, and I've done just fine at it. So...
And these other counties also don't have the school system as an integrated purchasing and accounting department. We do the school system bills. We do the school systems payroll. These other counties aren't doing that. So that's 800, 700, 800 employees that the other counties are having to process payroll for. We are not able to do it with the staff we have now. And it's always been... It's not Frida's decision. It's always been once a month. These ladies have been here 30 years. It's always been once a month.
I understand, but you're willing to usher in new ideas about pay and cars and this and that and additions, but you want to leave meeting times at 9:00 where the room is barely filled.
Hold on. The meeting times are a decision of the board.
I understand that. I'm speaking to every one of you when I speak about meeting times. I'm not just speaking to Frida.
It was a decision of six to one for that one.
Right. You were the only one that voted against it.
That is correct.
I remember. I was here. I voted for the whole board. Every one of you all are willing to increase pay. We've got to have that increased pay. We've got to increase revenue. But you don't want to include the public in the times that we have to be here. We have to read or look on YouTube. Y'all don't even put it in the paper anymore.
We did.
Because it's not feasible. It's not feasible. We can pay the maintenance man. We can give him a great big raise or whatever, over $100,000, but we can't put it in the paper every week. We have to put it on YouTube for the mom calls that's running a farm. You know they're not going to look on YouTube once a month.
It's also on cable, broadcast several times a week.
On Channel 30.
Yeah. I know because my grandma calls me every time. She sees my face on TV.
You can go on YouTube, and you can put the date of the meeting and pop it up right in there, and it's live right now? I know. I've seen it several times. But how many people are here at this meeting? I don't care how many people can go to YouTube. How many people are in this meeting that can be here today? They're out feeding their cows. They're out in their jobs. It would be easier for these people in Scott County to make a 6:00 meeting time than it would be for a 9:00 meeting time.
We tried that.
We tried that.
We tried it about three times since I've been here, and it did not work.
It did.
They wouldn't have been more crowded of the night than there was of the morning. We've tried it three different times.
And one was last year, from February to June. It was at 6:00 PM. Nobody else came.
And nobody came. Nobody will come until y'all... Nobody has an interest in coming until y'all pass through the fence like this right here. Nobody's going to come. And I remember reading the email that you wrote to Chris Manis about something being leaked because y'all have to discuss things in the email about it being leaked because we're not allowed to be here. We can't be here because of our schedules. You all are appointing two members to the 2026 Budget Committee. There's several things on here that people would like to be a part of, but we can't be here. And just because people are not here doesn't mean that you can't give them the option to be here. You are our representatives of the county. If we cannot be, if you cannot be available to us, you need a thermos of coffee or retire if you're too old. You can't keep up at late at night. We need to be able to come to these meetings instead of them being leaked like the taxes. The last meeting, when everybody was up or over 80 and talked to him like a dog...
I guess that was misinformation on that part.
That was just me that did that. I'm the only one that really got on his case about that.
Well...
May I say something, please? I have an open-door policy being on this board. Anybody can call me, come by my house, email me, text me, message me at any time from my district, and my district knows that because I say that I have meetings with my district so that I can discuss things with them. So I have an open-door policy, and I believe everybody here on this board has an open-door policy. We are your voice. So if you cannot come to these meetings, then by all means, call us.
Absolutely.
Email us, message us, talk to us.
Why didn't you vote for something besides the 9:00 AM vote time? If you're our voice, why didn't you vote for something other than a 9:00 AM meeting time? You're talking about the...
We tried the 6:00.
You tried, and nobody showed up. And it doesn't mean that you shouldn't be able to be here if you want to be here. You can't deny them the privilege of being here. You're talking about...
We're not denying anybody a privilege. We're not denying anybody a privilege.
I took vacation just to be here today for my job.
This is your job. This is your first job.
I have two jobs.
This is your first job.
I work plus I do this on the side.
Well, if this is not your side job, then you don't need to be doing it. This needs to be your first job.
You'd starve to death if it was your first job.
I'm going to disagree with you on that. Listen, on my off days, I am calling people. Last night, I called two people from my district and talked to them for over an hour each, talking to them about different things about VDOT and this and that. And I enjoy what I do because I want to help this county.
Yes, but you all want to talk about what other counties are doing. Other counties have their meeting at 6:00. It don't matter if the room is filled or not. They have their meetings at 6:00. Y'all have your planning commission meetings at 6:00 because you know people are going to have a hard time making the 9:00 meetings. You want to talk about other counties. Come up to par.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
I just want to add that I too am always available. I have took multiple phone calls during the week. I too work a job, and this is not my primary job. It's not. I do this, right? You don't tell me what I do.
It shouldn't be your primary job, but it should be your primary focus.
You don't think that's my primary focus?
If it was, you wouldn't have voted for a 9:00 AM meeting time.
Ladies.
You would have voted for something immediate to the public.
And I understand that you're concerned about that. I do. Because you know what? I have a job just like Michelle does. We both work at Eastman's. My job is my primary. That's my means of income. Do you know what we get paid for this? How do I pay my bills?
That's like we do because it's an act of service. It's not an act of pay.
I don't care what I get paid here.
You should do it because you want to do it.
You don't think I do that?
Okay. Then why didn't you vote for a later time for the...
We did. We tried that.
You tried, and nobody came. And so you decided we just make it?
We decided. I did decide.
We just decided to make it more convenient for us.
We decided.
To make it more convenient for you all, correct?
Let's end this discussion.
Be nice if people paid their taxes, too.
I'm sure I'm going to sit here.
You're supposed to go in first.
I know. I was ready to come first, but I'm very fast from Snowflake Road, and I had a complaint and they don't need to come up here complaining. So there's no reason for complaining, and I could get up here and hold VDOT under the bus, but we all know dirt roads in Scott County is a mess, and the vehicles and the buses, they're not cheap. And we just hope and pray that y'all, your all's trip to Richmond was a success, and I hope that Mr. Kilgore listens. We need more money for dirt roads. It's like the old saying says, you can't ride the train without money. And we need to bring more businesses into Scott County. I think that's a priority it needs to be, bring more businesses in. And I want to keep Snowflake Road on the six-year plan. I don't like the six-year plan, but I thank you all.
We're trying to get right back to Ms. Starnes. Appreciate you.
Gary Baker from Boose Creek. Chris, I want to congratulate you on being chairman, and you've got a big set of shoes to fill there, but...
I think condolences are...
Mike did an excellent job, ladies up there, and well, y'all all do an excellent job. And Frida especially, and Sally. We're blessed to have these two women.
Yes, thank you for saying that.
And all the ladies and gentlemen on this board, y'all do a wonderful job. And I was asked to present... There's four items on here that the Farm Bureau tried to get through the General Assembly. Now, a lady was in the crossover final yesterday going over to the sand with the bales. And Dennis Jones, our main guy from our district, sent this to me. I told him I was coming down here. One of the supervisors asked me to do this, but it won't take me but a second, Chris. We're trying to establish an insanity grant program by July 1st of '26 to address the shortages of large animal deadening areas in Virginia. I reckon they got that past or have almost got it past. And the other is one that I don't quite understand. Oh, I want to say something else. Bill Dingus does an excellent job, too. Anyway, I think the whole staff here, Amy always took care of me when I was older and stuff, and Taya. Anyway, to make a long story short, getting back to this, sorry to interrupt. I don't quite understand this, and the bill might do it, but there are greater flexibility in the reallocation of 50% of the unobligated cost shared dollars by the Soil and Water Conservation Board. Anyway, they pushed that, and they're thinking they're going to get that created. But two bills that they opposed is creating a state mandated one-size-fits-all standard of criteria for all localities pertaining to setbacks, fencing, solar panel height, and visual impacts, and a decommissioning plan for the siding of utility-scale solar facilities on agriculture, commercial, and industrial zones. Now, they're hoping they can get that killed. Somebody's trying to get that through. And the other one is opposing removing the exemptions from Virginia's... They oppose this, removing the exemptions for Virginia's minimum wage requirements for persons employed as a farm laborer, for farm employees, and certain temporary foreign Now, getting back to VDOT. Farm Bureau did get two things on their policy that why they didn't try to get it implemented this year, I don't know. But one of them was get to keep all the side dishes cleaned out and work with the EPA. Maybe this Lee Zeldin can calm down the EPA a little bit than what they've been doing. But VDOT's doing a wonderful job with what they have, and the other thing that we put up is to go back to the way it was several years ago before Kane done away with our money for the localities. We'd like to see... Well, we had three in Scott County with supervision, manpower, and vehicles, all the maintenance vehicles that we knew. We want to try to get that put back. Now, why they didn't bring it up this year, that's for them to know. They've got more sense about it. But we're working. We hope that we can help VDOT and get it back to the way it was back in the old days because now we had good roads back then. Side dishes kept cleaned out, and I know they have trouble with EPA, but I'm hoping they'll change. But up at... While VDOT's here, when they started on Boose Creek at Overland Drive, if they'd have just went 3/4 of a mile on up the road with that... If they'd have just went three quarters of a mile on up the road with that big ditch digger, they would have got all of them ditches cleaned out for, up the way before they was starting at Overland. The other day when we had them rains, that water comes right down the middle of the road, worse than the roadway and puddles in the road, you can't get through, but anyway. I know they're having a hard job and appreciate your time, Chris. I'm praying for you, hope you do a good job.
Thank you, I do need prayers.
Good morning, I'm Larry Biggers, Nicholsville. I'm here representing Keith Park. I'm the president of the seniors. Just before I start talking about Keith Park, I was talking a little bit about VDOT, I was drunk in my room. It looks like, uh, red bag city between here and Nicholsville. All the garbage is picked up. I think it's a challenge for the county to look at root cause. Doing the same things over or picking garbage up every two or three months and ask the VDOT to come pick up those bags is not really solving the problem. Think about some kind of program you could put in to solve this garbage problem. It's an awful appearance for the county and I worked in, uh, the computer industry for years. And many times I went out looking for sites to put all this. I could tell you if I was driving out and drove through and seen the appearance that we've got in the county, there would be no way in the world I would put an office. Having said that, it's just a challenge to look at what could you do to stop the garbage being thrown out the windows?
Mr. Biggers, uh, about a year ago, I contacted with the state police headquarters and talked to, I think it was Colonel there, and asked him about the number of tickets that had been written for litter in the southwest region. It was zero.
Yeah.
So.
But you can establish a fire that would make it and make an example of one or two people. Might change how many people throw it out. It don't, you don't have to catch a thousand, you're only going to catch two or three and word will get around. But that's not my bad wig, I'm just making an observation. Anyway, I came down here to talk about Keith Park. The state of the park is good. All the buildings are generally in good repair. The park overall, okay, keep this good. Last year we had a hundred and six paid rentals. Uh, sixteen no charges. That included twelve for the senior meetings, two for the Ruatan, uh, who had Binko out there to raise money to help us up, uh, meals of love and so forth. One for the PSA to do the, uh, Moxon and the Nicholsville Water Project. And I did a, a solar information PowerPoint presentation on, uh, the solar farms. And that, that was mainly an education presentation presenting both the pros and the cons without trying to be biased in either direction. We had about something around a hundred people down there, up in the nineties, I believe. Financially, in two thousand twenty-five, we used a program called Quicken to track all of our finances at the park. There's multiple reports to the senior meeting and everybody's getting a copy of all the income and expenses that we incur. Last year we took in twelve thousand and twenty-eight dollars. However, uh, seventeen hundred of that intake was seventeen, seventeen fifty, I'm sorry. Uh, that intake was the money that the county provided to, uh, stay the, uh, main building. So actually our revenue was down around ten five, actually. If you compare that to two thousand and twenty, when we had COVID, we only had an income of about twenty-nine hundred. So, so substantial increase of what we had then. In two thousand nineteen, we were, we were about nine thousand. So we have gone to revenue. This year on January the first, we voted to have an increase in, uh, charges for our park to clean up, uh, kind of our building policies a little bit. We were allowing people to come in an hour before at no charge, leave an hour later at no charge. So we've gone to one flat rate. You get eight hours anytime on a weekend for one twenty-five. But your time starts, if it starts at eight o'clock, that includes your setup and all that. So we don't have that hour before, hour after anymore. During the week we're at a hundred dollars. If anybody comes in and wants us to clean the building, we're going to charge them a fifty dollar cleaning charge on top of that. In addition, we're going to charge twenty dollars an hour for additional hours. Audio, video, audio is twenty five, or fifteen dollars, audio and video, that's with a projector and everything, is twenty-five dollars for a session. Our financial records were audited by Dean Tax Center and they found, had no findings of, uh, any problems at all. Our major expenses last year, building supplies, uh, thirteen hundred and ninety-eight dollars. A lot of that was involved in, uh, lawnmower maintenance and we bought new tires for NASCAR lawnmower. It's, it doesn't have a surround on it anymore. So it looks like it went into turn one and didn't come out too healthy. But, uh, maintenance supplies, that's cleaning supplies, toilet paper, dah dah dah. And that was fifteen hundred dollars. We stayed in the building, thirty-seven hundred dollars. We also put in, we changed the concession stand lighting from, uh, fluorescent to LEDs. We were having a lot of problems out there with starters and stuff, this stuff been in for twenty-five years. So we, we swapped all that out and it's all now LED lighting, which certainly helps with the electric bill, I mean. I can't go, I couldn't go without saying that Scott maintenance and the Scott workers have been really helpful all year. Without them, uh, we'd have a lot of problems. We just don't have the volunteers to do the work that we used to have and, and Bill and his guys have been really helpful, uh, in, in terms of coming up and fixing some of the vandalism we've had. And Scott workers jumped in after, uh, the hurricane and helped us do the, uh, the minor cleanup. Bill contracted out, uh, to get the, uh, the big stuff moved for us. Other facilities we have at the park and the fence that we have, Nicholsville Days, of course, happens every year. The Little League baseball team continues to be successful and draws, uh, a, a lot of crowds out there, particularly in the spring up until about the latter part of June. The high school baseball team plays at the park and, uh, the basketball courts are used in good weather. The kids from in a stroller up to ten or twelve years old use the playground equipment. And there's a one-mile walking trail. The park is really used. It is one of the most used facilities probably in the county. I would expect, and I, I know I made some rough counts on the senior building. We exceed five thousand people using that building every year. My expectation is in and out of the park that we go well over five figures, over ten thousand people in the park a year. It is a well-used and I've said this before, probably one of the most efficient operations that the county runs because of the volunteers up there and the work that they do. Challenges we have or have had this year, certainly Hurricane Helen made a mess up there. There were huge trees down across the trails in the woods, out through there, the power lines were down. And Bill got Dave Gardner, is that correct? Dave Gardner, did that right? They come in and clean all that out. They got the big stuff out, then Justin Vettel brought in the Scott workers and cleaned out the small brush. Uh, so all that got done and, uh, uh, we're back. We look good, we look really good. We, we still, I, I mentioned our NASCAR John Deere mower. Uh, it's twenty years old and got twenty-seven hundred hours on it right now. And we've been band-aiding it for the last two or three years. I took it over the Scots or the Cox tractor and the mechanics said they had never seen a mower of that's made with twenty-seven hundred hours on it. So it may mow this year and it may blow up this year. If it does, just be prepared, I could be down there begging for mercy, so. Playground equipment, it's also about twenty years old. Uh, it's getting some metal fatigue, wear and tear, and there's rusted areas. And we've done some maintenance on it, we've got it, kind of got it patched back together. The company that we bought it from is out of business, was out of Canada. And then we bought it of a, a local vendor, but, uh, anyway, we can't get parts for it. So, uh, I think we can hold that thing together for a while, but just as a, uh, just for information, we're looking at metal fatigue and some things that in the next few years we could, might have to do something there. We had vandalism this year and quite a bit of it really. Uh, two times the ladies bathroom had holes kicked in the walls, kicked through the sheet rock. Man, I think once with her fist. The little cabin where the baseball team uses for a locker room, the sliding glass door on it, somebody threw a block through it, busted the sliding glass door out. The main gate, uh, was broken and so, uh, thank goodness for security cameras. Security cameras that Matt helped us put in, uh, uh, caught two of those. They caught the gate vandalists and they also caught the ones going into the bathrooms and kicking holes in the wall. The little cabin, we didn't get that on the camera. But thank goodness that vandal made a video of it and posted this, so we got him too. At any rate, uh, the Scott County Sheriff's Department is prosecuting for the kicking the holes in the wall and the little cabin. The main gate was broken by some, uh, uh, juveniles. And we agreed for, uh, service work, cleaning out the flare beds over there for their payment. They didn't intend to do it. It was, it wasn't their intent, but they knew better. But anyway, they come over and did that. So we're, we're bowled that and hopefully the sheriff's department is, they, they picked up their, uh, surveillance a little more and make it certain that nobody's backing that park after dark. So they're running them out now. And, uh, between the cameras and the sheriff's department, I think we can stop mu- much of that. The next thing I want to talk about is succession planning. I organized or asked the, uh, senior citizens to have a succession planning committee and Cindy Green's going to hand it up. Now what do I mean by succession planning? We've talked many times down here about the people that attend the seniors are aging out. They're dying, they're getting sick and they're not able to do those jobs anymore. And we're down to, uh, a skeleton crew basically running the operations in the park. The plan is to try to attract new people to the seniors and hopefully pick up some more people that will help with the volunteer stuff to keep that, oh, we can still retain that with the senior citizens without having to come to the county and, uh, ask for more help. Or worst case, have to give it back to the county. Because if soon, if that park goes back to the county, it's probably going to take a minimum of two head counties to keep it operational and up to standards. And that brings me to my last two points. Projects for next year, we need to mark the parking lines in the, uh, in the parking lots, the fancy house. So we probably have to do that. Uh, might need to seal it. I've got to look at that and decide if we need to seal it. If we have to seal it, we're talking, talking about probably a thousand plus dollars. The last thing I want to talk about is, uh, project MF, uh, SMF twenty-five. Currently, uh, we, we don't have any place to, to store all the stuff we've got. Weed eaters, backpack blowers, uh, the big blower to blow leaves with, uh, chainsaws, dah dah dah, goes on and on and on. And, uh, we, we've got, we've got the wellhouse down there, which is something like an eight by eight or something, maybe a little bigger. And we've got a lawnmower in that, three weed eaters, a backpack blower, a chainsaw, and numerous other hand tools and stuff. If you look at the, at the picture there, you will see what a muck it is. I can't, I can't think of a better word to put on it. It's a muck with a capital M. Give me the next one, Bill. I'll, I'll back up and show you. There is a lawnmower, you can see, we don't, there's no shroud on it, so it, it looks like a NASCAR engine sitting out there on the front end of it. Okay, next picture, Bill. Okay, that's a picture of the stor-, that, that's a picture for this mic to hearing. That is a picture of the storage room beside the concession stand. You can hardly walk through there. There's a water pool in there that the baseball team uses. Behind that is, is a mule mitt for the baseball field, uh, marking two, uh, uh, two to mark the baseball lines back in the back. There's a, uh, uh, a wagon and then behind that is a power washer. And, and all those shelters are completely full. So bottom line is, we just don't have room for anything to organize anything right now. Here's what I've, uh, suggested that we do. There is three shelters out there currently. This shelter, uh, holds about, uh, about thirty people. It's rarely ever used. The reason for that is we built another shelter up at the concession stand a few years back. And it's about the same size or maybe a little bigger and you can pull right up to it, it's a lot easier to use. So there, there's a shelter I'm talking about, Bill's doing that. The other shelter is over at the, uh, concession stand and. Okay, well, okay, that's okay, Bill, stay right there. Right beside of that and right behind it is a shelter holds about a hundred people. And so we've got two shelters. Bottom line is, we have plenty of shelters. We want to take that, that shelter and enclose it and make a, uh, a, a storage and a maintenance facility out of it. That will require putting about, uh, twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-three sheets of T one eleven on it, putting a roll-up garage door in. Uh, the T one eleven will cost probably twelve, fourteen hundred dollars. The roll-up garage door, a nine by eight, is about, uh, seven or eight hundred. The electric running down there and putting a conduit in, you're talking over a thousand. So we're probably looking somewhere around five thousand dollars. I'm not going to ask you for the money, so you can rest easy. What I want to do is, we have some money, operational money left in, in our treasury. We're going to use some of that, but we also have capital money. And some of you have been on the board. I know Mr. Jeter's heard me talk about the capital money we have that we helped back and didn't spend it for operating costs. We want, we, we'd like to take what we need out of that capital money to make up anything we can't do with the operating expenses. And we plan on doing that project pretty early spring. I'm out looking for contractors and the best, most efficient way to do that right now. But, uh, but to move that money out of the, uh, uh, capital fund, Amy's got the signature to do that, I believe, right?
I don't think so.
You don't? I thought, I thought you wrote the check. Well, I, I don't know. The county administrator may have to sign off on it too, but the, the money, where did that money come from? It, it was grant money that the park. It was grant money that the park went out and applied for grants. But to facilitate getting those grants, it was done in the county's name. That's where the money come from. And at one time, we built the bridge out of it, part of it, and we ended up with thirty-some thousand left a few years ago. And we took ten out to add that concession stand, uh, from the concession stand where we got the picnic tables up there. So we're down to, I think, about nineteen thousand now, if I remember correctly.
I think in the past, your board had, or they had to approve it, your board?
Yeah, the board approved it, yeah.
And then like two people sign off on it?
Yeah, I signed off on it the last time. Jeff's now NARA, so he'll sign off on it. And then.
And then we processed the check.
That's all I signed off on, I guess, is.
I think it was two signatures on each invoice.
The senior and the, okay, so me and Jeff had to sign off on it, and then you could write the check. Okay. Okay. Questions? No questions? I'm gone.
I think you've already got it figured out.
Pardon?
I said, I think you've already got it figured out, what you need.
We know what we need, we just got to go do it.
Hey, we appreciate you coming with solutions.
All right, thank you.
Yes. No, I just said, yes, I appreciate you coming with solutions. I agree with that.
Anybody else wish to speak in citizen's expression?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Jake Doherty, and I'm in Shawshank, Scott County. Just wanted to be here for a brief moment this morning to promote plans for pause. Again, Marsh Regional Blood Center is doing on February the twenty-fourth through February the twenty-eighth at Bristol-John City and Kingsport Donations Centers. Everyone that donates blood during that time will be asked which organization they want to, ten dollars will be given to for local animal shelter. That can be whichever you choose, and you'll also receive a t-shirt, a thing to pay. They do this every year. I've never come before the board to talk about it before, but it just timing was right today. And we just wanted to get it promoted and let everybody know about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. President?
Yes.
I would like to apologize for the question here. We're getting hurt.
I'm glad, I'm glad you can hear my home. Anyone else for citizen expression?
My name is Tina Mash. I'm with the Scott County Humane Society. I just want to let everybody know that we have got our fay neuter program back up. I have got a local vet that's actually going to work with us, so we do not have to drive to Athens and Bristol anymore. We will not be dealing with Margaret Mitchell no more. We're going to be using a local vet. She's going to guarantee the same prices that they use. I've worked with this vet in the past when I was working, so I trust her with everything. And she's wonderful, and she's going to really help this community by doing what she's doing, by helping us getting the discounted prices and taking care of animals here in Scott County. I know we have a county vet, I understand David is and stuff. The one thing she did tell me is she will not euthanize anything unless it absolutely has to be euthanized. She's actually with the Humane Society, if we have to pay us up to the vet, we will be using her. She's located in Weber City. It's Dr. Harrison. She was with Dr. Fuller. I worked for Dr. Fuller for almost five years, and I worked for her too. And she's wonderful, and she's willing to step up and help Scott County with, we have bad issues with all these animals that need to be fixed, and people dumping animals. She takes animals in herself, fixes them out of her pocket, and rehums them herself. Also, we were wondering, you guys used to give the Humane Society some money to help. And we didn't know why that stopped. And we wanted to see if there was any way that that could be helped go back so we can help more people.
You should be getting money from the DMV tax. You should get that every year. It's not a lot. I believe this year it was a little over a hundred dollars, but that was approved, I believe, at the November board meeting. So that money should be coming to you. I'll double-check on that today, but I think that was a little over a hundred dollars. So that'll help some. But that comes each year, and the board directs that to the Humane Society.
Okay, and another thing is, we have a cat problem in Scott County. And I know, I have a cat problem at my house because I take in every foster, because people call me, oh, we got baby kittens. And I always love to hear people say, well, it's cat season. No, kitten season is every day. People don't realize, the man in the cat house, a kitten, they can get pregnant within an hour after having those kittens. I mean, there's no kittens, there's no such baby's kit season. Kitten cats can have babies just like rabbits constantly, just back to back to back. And I wanted to see if there was anything we can get approval to do a catch and release by getting these animals' cats fixed, vaccinated, and having a colony put in. I've seen them in Irwin, the school kids built little houses, and they, you know, we go out, me and the president of the Humane Society and some of the other teachers at the school system, we go out, we feed these animals, but we'd like to have an area that we can have a little area where we can put these cats that are having them vaccinated and fixed, and be able to just have them where they're instead of some at the high school, and you know, some here and everywhere else. We're, I mean, we're running short on, we don't have, nobody will foster, we can't get anybody to foster. There, between the four of us, we literally have more than we should. But that's also not the animal's fault that has nowhere to go. It's because these people out here are irresponsible, not spaying neutering their animals or just dumping their animals. And I think that's another thing. I think that these people that are dumping, there should be more harsher bodies because there's too many animals in Scott County that's being dumped. And it's, it's, I get calls all the time, and I talk to Jake all the time too, and, I mean, I've got people telling me, well, there's this dog out here, and then I get a call, well, can you come pick this dog up? Or can you get these cats? And, I mean, I've traveled all the way to the end of Scott County out there in Boosie Creek to pick up a cat and its kittens because the elderly lady was afraid that she'd fall and get hurt. And I can't live like that. But if she would fall, get hurt, that's going to eat at me, especially if something would happen to her, she would pass away because some little cat got underneath her feet because they got excited thinking they were going to get fed. I just think that we need to have better laws and stuff in Scott County about animals. I mean, there's too many people that, they should be prosecuted a little bit more when it comes to the animals and higher findings. And I know we've got the dog tags for the county, and we've got, everybody has to have a rabies. I know State Virginia State's, if you have an animal, it has to have a rabies vaccine. But if we could have more rabies clinics and stuff to get these animals vaccinated, you know, David is our county vet. If he could step up just a little bit more and be like, okay, we're going to do this, you know, just to help if you need to be a little bit more, instead of people trying to cross over the state line to get this taken care of. There was just a lot with, you know, the Humane Society, we do a lot. We don't, I know we get some recognition, but people don't know the best. We don't get paid. We do all this, either comes out of our pockets or what some grants we do get. You know, we work a lot. I get calls at ten o'clock at night, can you stay, can you help me spay neuter my cat or my dog? And I'm like, we have business hours, let's try to stick to those, but I still talk to them. I get people calling me, oh, I got, I need to feed, you know, can you help us with some dog food? Or, you know, or twin chicks and stuff like that. And I have talked to food lions, they're going to start trying to help us get donations in and stuff like that. But we need to see what we can get a little bit more help of like, so we can get more, to help more people in Scott County. And I don't know what you guys can do. I just said, I told the other people that I've worked with on the board that I would come forward and talk to you guys to see if there's any way that you guys could help us a little bit more.
We'll keep our eyes open for any opportunities.
I mean, if you can, we just took more grants or anything like that, we're more welcome to look into anything to help us because these, these animals don't listen to this. I mean, you can abuse an animal, you can abuse a child or any human being, and these animals, you know, they didn't have to be put here, so we're trying what we can to take care of them. I know Jake does a good job by doing what he does by going out here and, you know, collecting up the animals in the county and everything, but they're over rent, well. Sometimes I take in a dog, I ride it off, and I'll be like, I'll keep it this long, you know, and sometimes it lasts three months, but I do what I can, and I mean, most of the time, if I keep a dog, he does give me some dog food, the puppies and stuff, but like the bear dogs, that comes out my pocket. And, I mean, I don't have a problem with helping the animals. But at the same time, if we can get a little bit more help out of the county. And if they can, if you guys can approve us to do a colony, that would help us a lot too with the cat problem. Because we want to test some of these cats, and if they are, you know, sick, I hate to say it, yes, they need to be euthanized. We have a lot of sick cats in Scott County. There's been a lot at the high school that we could definitely have euthanized. A lot of people don't like to hear that, but I've worked in vet medicine, I've worked with large animal and small animal, and we don't want sick animals out here contaminating other animals. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.